Call to order, City Forest Park, City Council Work Session, November 2nd, 2020. There are no items above the line. We have several below the line, starting with Resolution Amendment to CARES Act Funding. Mr. Herbert, you got anything on that, or you gonna wait?
Well, I wasn't entirely sure if the amendment was just the extension of the date. But this, what I'm, the way I'm reading this is it's a reaffirmation of a resolution we passed in June. And the only thing that I can see that's different is that the date that the city has to encumber the funds was extended from the 15th to the 20th. And the other two companion acts are probably also in line with the CARES Act's requirements, which is to declare funding for public safety personnel and then define essential public safety personnel. So, that's the way I understand it.
Anybody got any questions on those first three? Don, do you have anything to add on any of those?
I'm looking for my, no, I don't. Basically, they all have to do with making sure that we comply with the CARES Act. We had to amend the resolution, our original resolution, again, extending the date. And then the other two are resolutions that talk about our ability to use CARES Act funds to pay public safety and public service personnel. So, these are kind of requirements that we think are, the first one's definitely needed. It's a requirement for that particular piece of the CARES Act. And then the other ones are, we've just heard some, I guess about two weeks ago, they came out with new guidance in the, with regards to what the CARES Act can be used for. And this is just an affirmation of that guidance and our, and the city councils and the cities' determination that our first responders are able to be paid with CARES Act funds.
Okay, then we go down to reappropriations.
That's just to affect the payment, make the appropriate, yeah, make the appropriate appropriations for that.
Councilwoman Moore, we have property maintenance lanes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I can discuss it when we get into the council session.
All right, then the last thing on the work session, on the below the line, is the winter recess. To my knowledge, so, well, I have to go back and ask Sally. This is the usual recess that we do. We, if we came back on the first Monday, that would limit the recess to something like seven or eight days. And I believe we always normally come back on a work session anyway. So by moving it to the work session, you have the dates there, the first day being December 22nd and through the 10th. So we will be coming back, our meeting would be on Monday, the 11th. So that's all I would have on that one. Anybody else got anything for the good of the order on the work session?
Hey, Don, I just had a question in regards to the appropriations on the funds. So you got, they got the line items of the personal services and contractual services. Are those line items also associated with the guidelines that are defined with the CARES Act?
Yes, yeah, and that particular piece of money, yes, they are.
And there will be subtitles that would, that would be associated with these, with the main title of the one, two, three, four line items, especially, I guess, the one with others.
Yeah, other, other is, we have personnel contractual, but the other is just basically kind of everything. But it is the, they, they're all, everything that we're spending and all the detail level rolls up when it's, when we budgeted, it's other. But there are detailed line items for each one of those, and there's a budget for each expenditure. And we've got separate buckets of money for COVID.
Right.
That we're trying to spend it in accordance with, with the requirements. The main thing we've spent it on, there's, you'll notice, there's like 300 and I want to say 16,000 in expenditures that are kind of different than the others. They're really, they, they are specific and can only be used for specific purposes. The others are, are the, the rest of the money, we've received a significant amount of money. But until we received guidance last week, we, we could not use it on salaries. Now we can, so we were looking for ways to spend this money. And we've spent, we've spent it on ways to, a lot of it's been for capital. We've redone a lot of the building, mainly because, if you remember, most of our offices were open. And we've created new areas in the building, particularly in the tax and finance office. And, and you'll see it in city council as well, in that first floor, where we're trying to, basically, if a person's working in an area, that they're not sharing that area with someone else in a close proximity. So we're trying to keep not only the people safe that come in and work with us. So there, there'll be glass in front of folks that come in, the general public. But we're also putting up offices where there were just open, open areas before. So we've created a lot of offices with doors that will allow people to go in and work by themselves. So a lot of, a lot of the things we've done relate to that. We've also got a lot of expenditures with regards to, we put in new locks in the building that we use the, instead of the touch locks, we now have the, the access cards. So people don't have to touch things. We're changing out the bathroom fixtures, so you don't have to touch the toilets and the sinks and the, and those things. So a lot of the things that we're doing, we've added programs that computer program allows to, again, not have as much interaction, physical contact with, with folks. A lot of those funds have been spent on that, but the majority of it will be spent, now that we're allowed to do it, will be spent on our first responders, mainly because it helps us, not only, you know, we're a lot of folks impacted by this. The city's impacted because our earnings taxes are down significantly as people aren't working and, you know, they're laid off. The city income taxes are, even if they had the money to pay, they can't pay it because they're just, they're not working. So we're, our income taxes are affected significantly. And up until the most recent guidance, cities were not allowed to pay their, use this money to pay their, keep their police, their fire online. So this is going to allow us to use that money instead of, you know, maybe buying something with it to actually help us defray the costs of keeping our police and fire and our other public works folks, public service folks working during the pandemic, so we can keep up our levels of service with the community.
Also, also, you might need, I can tell you that, keep in mind that when this money was first allocated and the first guidelines came out, as usual, nobody understood what they were. Nobody knew what you could use the money for, couldn't use the money for. And it became a continual changing thing, not only because you were dealing with the state and the federal government. We even had situations where the state would say, okay, yeah, you can use it for A, but the federal government would say, oh, no, you can't do that, but you can use it for B. One example being, if you recall initially, especially employees, the clerical people. A lot of those people worked from home. And initially, we had, not just, not just Forest Park, but overall, people had trouble determining which of the people who were working at home could actually be funded out of this money. And almost on a weekly basis, that game changed. And to be honest with you, I would dare say that probably, when the next allotment of money comes, there's going to be some additional changes. Some of the things that they're saying now we can pay for, they may reverse. Some of the things that they're now saying, still saying we can't pay for, we might be allowed to. So I guess the best thing I could say to you is be prepared to keep, to get additional resolutions or amended resolutions, so that we can keep up with what we can do it with. And still, what, the other impact that this have is, I think this time they did move the, the date back a little bit in terms of how much time we had to spend it. But you can see what the problem would be, when they're telling what we can use it on, but then they had a fixed date. You know, so they did move the date back, but that's why we got, we're likely to keep coming back more, you know, almost all the time with changes to meet those requirements. So we get, because it won't, it won't do us any good to have the money and can't spend it.
Yeah, and one of the other things that you should know, this is flow-through money. So it's not coming out of our revenues. But we have to account for it as being received and spent.
Okay, anything else for the, for, on these items, or the items that are on the agenda for the work session? Then we got about a minute, Dana. Call to order, City of Forest, Forest Park, City Council Meeting Number 1363, November 2nd, 2020. We'll start the meeting with the pledge leave led by Councilwoman Moore.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And thank you, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Moore and Councilwoman Denise for the flag. All right, Sally, are you ready?
Yes.
Would you please call the robe?
Brown.
Here.
Clark.
Here.
Herbie.
Here.
Holt.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Sylvester.
Here.
Okay, let the minutes show that we're all present and accounted for. You should have all received the minutes from the last meeting. Are there any additions to the minutes or corrections? There are no one, we'll let the minutes stand, it's approved as presented. Move to item number three, presentation. The first, the presentation that we have tonight are the people who were chosen to be in the Civic Hall of Fame. Just very quickly, many years ago, we established an ad hoc committee of citizens to select employees and residents who they feel, based on criteria that they developed, where should be inducted into the Hall of Fame. We don't do it, the committee meets annually, but there are some years when they don't select anybody and there are some years when nobody is nominated. But for this time around, we have four people who the committee has selected. But first of all, let me, before doing that, let me give you the names of the people on the ad hoc committee of the Civic Hall of Fame. This committee is chaired by Mr. Urban Smith. The members are Carolyn Grant, Lena Persons, and Denny Snyder. The people who they, who the committee selected, the first one was Mary Lou Hoffman. Mary Lou Hoffman has been a resident of Forest Park for 62 years. She's a charter member of the Historic Society. She's been a member of the Forest Park Gardeners for 50 years, a member of the Forest Park Women's Club, Beautification Committee, the Street Tree Society, and the Forest Park Senior Center. So Mary Lou Hoffman would be the, one of the four people. The second one is former council member Wendell Burns. Mr. Burns has been a resident of Forest Park for 15, 15 years, 16 years. He was a member of council for four, 14 years, vice mayor for 10 years. He chaired the planning commission for, he was vice chair of the planning commission for three years. Mr. Burns, when he was on council, served as chair of the Community Development Committee during the time that it was selecting, we were in the process of changing over and selecting Rumke as the waste removal agent. He worked with Mr. Wright-Gwen in developing that, which have saved, over the years, have saved our citizens a substantial amount of money. He is a member of the National Society of Black Engineers and a member of fraternity called Alpha Phi Alpha. The third person would be Joanne Lee. Joanne Lee is an employee, she's a lifetime resident of Forest Park. She's lived in Forest Park for over 40 years, she grew up here, she attended and graduated from, what at that time was the Forest Park High School. She was first employed in Forest Park in 1979 as a clerk typist. And she became the administrative secretary in 1986. She's a noted Republic and Joanne probably knows as much as anyone, probably with the exception of maybe John Wyckoff, about the Forest Park City Charter. She guides the Civil Service Committee along those lines. The fourth person is also an employee, this would be Dave Bisken. He was employed, been employed by Forest Park for 31 years. He first served as the Stormwater Utility Director. He became, he promoted to Public Works Director in 1994. He's responsible for street, street, street tree projects, street projects, capital improvement, building and parks maintenance, city forestry, the fleet services, city engineering, and beautification projects. He's a member of the Southwest Ohio Public Works Association. And he is active in stormwater management industry and public works association at the national, regional, state, and local levels. Because of his leadership, Forest Park has become and still is one of the most outstanding public works departments around. Everybody comes to us for, to get our ideas and to use the things that we've done. Dave has saved the city many thousands of dollars over the years because of his careful planning, especially in the area of purchasing for vehicles as well as for soft for snow removal. So those are the four people who the Hall of Fame Committee has selected and would be inducted. Normally, we would have done this at the Employee Volunteer Dinner, but because of COVID, we didn't have that. And like so many other things, we're having to do virtually and/or by mail. So their certificates and plaques will be either mailed to them and in the case of the two employees, where it will be hand delivered to them by Sally Dunn or myself. The next item on the agenda, item number four is communication from the public. Mr. Jones, did you have anything, anybody on that?
Well, we didn't have anything from anyone who specifically asked to address city council at this meeting. But we did have a email with regards to, and Mr. Sylvester had asked a question about it as well. It is a very positive email, but there were some questions about, do we have any plans for Witten Road? And do we have any plans for, with concerns with regards to the, the children walking and the lack or, lack of sidewalks in that area? So we're, we've met with OKI last year, or earlier this year, before the COVID came in. And we are looking at, at that whole area. But we've talked about it, we're looking at it, we don't have any specific plans as yet. But the bike trail and the connectivity through the park and the rest of Forest Park runs through that area. And we would hope to be able to work with the great parks and Witten Woods in particular in, in creating a bike trail or a walking trail through that area. But we'll still have to address the kids walking through there. Hopefully, we can, we can do something in the future.
There was communication from the public, so we will now move to item number five, reports standing committees. The first of those being Community Development Committee, Councilwoman Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do not have report at this time.
Any questions for Councilwoman Moore? Hearing now, Councilwoman Moore, I don't have anything listed for you for the, for items on the agenda for the next work session. Do you have anything to add?
No, I do not.
The next committee is Human Resources Committee, Councilwoman Holt.
Yes, it's time for the evaluation of the city manager and the law officer and also Sally. So Sally, I will be contacting you later this week to see how we're going to talk, to discuss how we're going to handle that issue.
Okay.
And with that, I have no other.
The, any questions for Councilwoman Holt? Councilwoman Holt, I have one item on the agenda for you for the next work session, and that would be reappointments to those people who are on boards of committees who would be reappointed.
Okay.
The next committee report is Law Committee, Mr. Brown.
I have no items to add to the agenda at this time.
Thank you. And I don't have any on the agenda for you. Any, the next report would be Public Improvement and Facilities, Mr. Sylvester.
Mr. Mayor, I don't have any report at this time.
Question for Mr. Sylvester. You know, Mr. Sylvester, I don't have any items listed for you, so do you have anything that you'd like to add?
I know, sir.
Next report is Public Safety Committee, Councilman Clark.
I don't have a report at this time, Mr. Mayor.
I have no items on the agenda for you. Do you have any, anything to add?
The only thing I'd like to say is a nice kudos to, I'm assuming, Rob Silver and Mr. Jones for the update on that website. It looks so 21st century. I'm very proud of you guys. It looks good. Looks really good. It's so easy to use. I'm, I'm working with it, but I really, really like it. So thank you for that.
Okay, the next report would be Ways and Means, Councilwoman Herbert.
I have no report.
I have no items on the agenda for you for the next work session. Do you have anything to add?
No, sir.
The next committee report is In Government Relations and Communications. I don't have a report on the agenda for the next work session. We have, we have three employment contracts that we would need to, that we would need to vote on. I can tell you that, I believe, those, those contracts would be for the magistrate, prosecutor, and the law director. That would conclude my report on governmental relations. If there are any questions, I'll try to answer. Hearing now, we will move to item number six, the mayor's report. The only thing I would say is, as Councilwoman Clark said, as far as I'm concerned, it, it looks very good. But then, you all know me and technology, I wouldn't know whether it was good or not. But I want to thank the people who, who worked on it. I'm sure they know. And at some point, anything that I need to know what to do with, either Sally or Rob will tell me, as usual. Also, just briefly, and I'm pretty sure that Don will go into some of this as well. The news from the State Department of Health and the County Department of Health is not good at all. We came very close to it, probably would have, or maybe should have been moved into a purple area. We did not. And having said that, it's a good news part of it. The bad news is that over the last couple of weeks especially, the last cycle, that we usually go in a two or three week period, the numbers have gone up, I mean, they're off the chart. And this past Friday, for two straight weeks, we have broken the record for the number of cases on a given day. This last Friday, the new record was 280 cases. That's, that's, this is county, that was, that's a lot. In the county, we went from, in terms of hospitalization, we went from 80 for a time period to 300. And in relation, in terms of admissions to the ICU, we tripled. We went from 25 to 75. It doesn't seem to be getting any better, getting, it's getting worse. The governor has suggested that we look at this more from a local standpoint, meaning county and local municipalities, trying to come up with ideas and suggestions as to what we may do, or what we can do in terms of basically educating our public and also make sure that as nearly as possible, everybody is, is on the same page, given the same message. I'm sure that all of you have seen or heard in the news, a big part of the problem seems to be what they're calling pandemic fatigue. Another part of that is in turn, not, not just pandemic fatigue, but we have become very lax in doing what we need to do. And also, there seems to be, if not, if the number's not growing, at least that, that, there's a group out there that's becoming far more vocal and insisting that this thing is not real. It's a figment of somebody of our imagination. You know, you, we're hearing more and more people say, saying that based on something that they read or saw on Facebook or heard that masks don't do any good. There are even some folk that are saying that masks are actually harmful and creating more problem with bacteria than by wearing the mask that they're sawing. And finally, we're not found that one of the other, probably the biggest culprit out there now is we have gone back to, and maybe it's part of the fatigue or people just getting bored and need something to do, group meetings and group gatherings is increasing fantastically. And again, we're not talking about, we're talking about the county generally, but in Forest Park specifically. We know that this is taking place, whether you're talking house parties, whether you're talking birthday parties, when the weather was a little better, people doing outside gatherings, barbecues or whatever. We, all, wedding parties. As far as the city goes, the only thing that we could really do is, is what we've been doing. We're not making our venues available. We're basically saying, no, you can't do that here. But people are finding other ways and other places together. I know that we were all waiting and glad that football season started, but that too is a major, major issue. Because you, you have the tailgating parties going on, you have very, you know, more and more people are not observing. uh, very, you know, more and more people are not observing social distancing. People are not wearing masks at, at these gatherings. You know, I, I don't know about the rest of you folk, but see, I'm, it's just like in most other things. At my age, I can't run. I can't run away from you. So I, you know, and, and not wanting to be rude, if you come toward me and you're not wearing a mask, I first back up politely, and then I say, get away from me. Because I don't want to get it. And I don't want to get it and then give it to somebody else. But we have to find some way to convince people that it's gonna get worse before it gets better if we don't go back to do it. If you recall, when this first started, people were, you know, there, there was control over how many people were being let in stores and businesses. Uh, out front, the businesses had, were counting people. All of these kinds of things were going on. But now it seems to be that people are saying, hey, we did that. We don't need to do that anymore. That's not the case. Uh, uh, so obviously, I knew I was in a meeting today, I'm gonna be in a couple tomorrow, and then the rest of the week. So if anybody has any ideas of what we, and I'm talking about the universal we hear, not, not the city of Forest Park, can do to help people to understand that we gotta do better. Uh, uh, please, don't, don't hold back. Let, let me know. Uh, as I say, you know, citywide, our hands are really tied because we don't have the ability to enforce any of these guidelines. I mean, if somebody reports them to us, we can basically report it to the health department. But that's all. And hopefully, people will start taking this, uh, more serious than they have. Uh, and if that, with that, uh, that would be my report, but please, folk, help us out. And if anybody else has any comments on what we can do or what, uh, any ideas, um, boards will hear.
I just have a brief comment. Um, I don't want to, I don't want to.
Go ahead.
That's okay. Um, I don't want to share, uh, this organization. But, um, one thing that, that I'm coming across is that, with having children in different activities and at schools and things like that is they're very hesitant to tell you what's actually happening and who has it. I think that's part of the problem because people are really going around, you know, thinking, oh, nobody has it. I find out today that there is a kid in the other classroom that my daughter, my, they, they're separate classrooms. But so now that entire class is on a quarantine. So now that I did get that through email, but there's, there's a lot of people that have it in these institutions that hold a lot of people are trying to keep this information so private as to not get people upset, but people aren't realizing that there's, there's some people right here in our city that are up in Cleveland right now, fighting to try to live.
Yeah.
I, I think that's part of it. They, they need to be able to, they, they should almost be forced to share, hey, this is what's happening and not their name or anything, but, you know.
Councilwoman Holt, yes, ma'am. So, so you said in the beginning of your, your, um, your talk that the governor said it was up to the city. I mean, what did you mean by that? If, if, if our hands, hands are tied, I mean.
Well, what, what, what he said was, he would like for the city leaders, county leaders, to get together and see what kinds of plans and ideas we can come up with to better inform the people. Okay, and then what I said at the end is, we don't, we don't really have any enforcement powers. Personally, Denise, I think, aside from what Chelsea said, and I agree with her, I don't think it's a matter of people not knowing what they're supposed to do. I think it's more of a matter of people choosing not to. You know, I, you know, we can put up, we can put all of the billboards and posters and all of everything else out there that we want to put out there. If people choose not to do it, if you don't have some kind of, some mechanism to say, if you don't do A, then B is a consequence. Then I don't know what, what's gonna, uh, cause people to do it. You know, it's one of those things where if it does not personally touch me or my family, then, and I'm using the universal me here, then I don't know how much, you know, I don't know whether just informing me about it is going to help much. I, I don't know that there are a lot of people out there walking around that don't know this is going on already. But it's, it's not, to me, it's more, what are you gonna do about it than informing people that it's here? Because I think we all know it's here. Some people don't want to accept it and denying it, but generally speaking, I believe people know the virus is here. Now, doing something about it or what, what we can do about it is, uh, and I, I will ask John when we get to his report to maybe, you know, from a legal standpoint, I don't, the city, I don't know if there's anything we can do. You know, we can, we can talk to the Chamber of Commerce and ask them if they would make sure that all of the, you know, their business, associates, make sure that they have their notices posted and, and see what, what, if anything, they can do. Uh, we don't have the ability as a city, I don't believe, John will tell me, right or wrong. I don't think we have the ability to go into a business and order them to close because either people in that business or they themselves are not following the guidelines. That to me, that in and of itself is a problem. They are guidelines. They, they are recommendations. They aren't, you must. So when, when it's a, you, when it's a guideline or recommendation, that leaves people free to either do or not do. At least that's my opinion. Anybody else?
That is so true because I went bowling and they, even though they have a sign on the door that says, mask required, then you go inside and half of the people don't have masks. So I went to the guy, asked him, why do you have a sign on the door? It's required. I said, but it's not required for you to enforce it inside. And he said, well, do you want me to? My only thing was, duh, what do you think? The sign, they had you post that sign for a reason. So I have called the, um, the, um, Board of Health
Yeah.
on two places, so I'm just waiting now to see the results of that. Because I told them, if they didn't do anything, then I'm going to the news so they can come out, show all these folks with no mask on. And then from that, I was going to the state.
Okay. Well, anybody else on that? If not, I will move next to the city manager's report.
Diane?
Um, you know, I keep saying that you ought to equate this as no shirt, no shoes, no mask, no service. Because that idea of no shirt, no shoes, no service has been around for years and nobody seems to balk at that. I think this should just be added and equated.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, your report, please.
Well, I will, uh, since we're on that topic there, I'll just say that, uh, the city is doing everything we believe we can. We're trying to get the word out. We keep the word out. We're trying to protect our citizens that, that we come in contact with and protect our employees. But as you all are aware, no matter how you, hard you try, you still, uh, you can keep it outside, but people will bring it in. And if you go out and, and you work with people, no matter what you think you know about a person or what you think you know about your family, you don't know where they're at and you don't know where they've been. And, um, like I told my family, I said, you wanna, you wanna kill grandma and grandpa? Young, young folks, you college kids, your high school kids, come on over for Thanksgiving because we don't know where you've been and we know you're the worst violators. Come on over for Thanksgiving and, uh, we'll get 20, 30 people in the room, and that's what's gonna happen. So when you've got that type of, this time of year is coming around, Thanksgiving, Christmas, obviously, no one wants to be the Grinch. And, uh, we all want to get together with our families on Thanksgiving and, uh, celebrate. But understand what you're doing as a family. The, and, and I've told my family that, you know, don't be so selfish, and I'm not gonna be so selfish that I want you guys to come see me and to have, you know, a big party with all our folks that, um, that it ends up affecting or killing one of our family members. So, um, take that into account, uh, when you're out there and, and you're getting ready to have these big get togethers for the, for the holidays. Understand the risks you're taking because there is a risk. It's a huge risk. Because this, this virus is out there and it's gonna get worse before it gets better. That being said, tomorrow is Election Day. And, uh, we've been assured there is one polling place at the senior center that the city, uh, that is on city property. But there are other, uh, polling places in the city. We've talked to the, the folks at the Board of Elections and they've assured us that they're taking every step uh, that they can to protect not only their workers but the voters. So, um, I'm relaying the message. Don't be afraid to come to the polls tomorrow. Uh, but make sure you wear your masks, you know, wash your hands, take the precautions that you should take. And, uh, and then go out and vote if you haven't already. The, uh, that really is the, the most of the, the big things that are going on. We do, we did launch our new website. We think, and, you know, the, the kudos go out to all the employees who had a hand in that. And, um, and we're gonna continue to operate it and, and update it and bring it in, you know, hopefully make it, uh, more informative and, uh, make it, make sure that it gets more usage among the public and make that our prime portal for people, for information for people that, uh, live in the city to go to and be able to easily find things and communicate back and forth with us. Uh, as part of the things that we've been doing recently with regards to some of the CARES money is we are, um, buying some new software that, uh, we're implementing as we speak, uh, whether that's in, um, multiple departments, but in, in particular, our permitting and our, uh, property maintenance department are, um, switching out software. And, uh, so hopefully that by the end of the year, we'll be able to roll that out as well. The, um, and I'll just leave that up. If there's anybody has any questions or concerns, uh, we'll be glad to answer them.
Any question for a city manager?
Yes, Donna, is the city doing, uh, COVID testing?
We are, we are having COVID testing tomorrow.
Tomorrow, okay.
For the employees and, uh, obviously, city council members as well. I believe it's four to six. And it's for the employees and their family, uh, their family members as well. So everybody, um, you know, come out and bring your family with you. Uh, it's being done by the University of Cincinnati. And I'm not sure exactly which test they're giving, but they'll be, I believe they'll be here from four to six tomorrow uh, at City Hall. So, um, obviously, that, that's just for city employees. That's not a citywide event. The, uh, Health Collaborative is still doing, I believe, every Tuesday and Thursday at the Inspirational Baptist Church. I believe they are having, uh, free testing as well, uh, drive-through testing. So there are significant, and the county has multiple sites throughout the county that they are also, you know, providing testing. So, uh, if you feel like you need to be tested, uh, there's an opportunity. Uh, the public has an opportunity at the, uh, at these, uh, county-wide events. Uh, we are testing our employees to get a baseline tomorrow to make sure that, uh, just as a service to our employees, as you know. And, uh, we did meet with the County Health Director, uh, who is overseeing the significant portion of the county's response. The, uh, the medical director, excuse me, not the Health Department Director. And, uh, he's given us a lot of good advice. And, uh, essentially, you know, we've, we've done everything we can. We've done some really good things. But you just never know, you know, when people go out on the weekends and they come back to work on Monday. Um, and they, you know, they're in, they're in your building, working with their employees, and what, you know, you just never know. Uh, it takes, I believe, up to 10 days for them to, five to 10 days to really show it. Uh, or to, you know, they're, they're contagious, but they don't know it. And that's what a lot of this is, is getting back to, uh, what, uh, Councilman Clark said, that people don't, don't think that they're being exposed to people, but they really are because they don't know it. They don't know they have it. They don't know the people that are with have it. And, and they didn't know they had it when they were with them. And, uh, all this contract, contact tracing goes backward. So we're, we're, um, we're gonna, we're gonna be testing or offering testing to all of our employees tomorrow.
Okay, thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda would be item number eight of the report. First of those being Mr. Wyckoff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everybody. With respect to this, uh, COVID and enforceability by the city, of course, although we're a home rule, uh, charter municipality, we are limited in our powers to the effect that we cannot pass laws contrary to the state of Ohio laws. And right now, the state of Ohio laws are governing the COVID issue through the Board of Health. Uh, as you were all talking, and I was thinking on my own personal experiences and things that you have said, my one suggestion would be that either through our Chamber of Commerce or an appropriate department head, communication be made to local business owners, uh, reminding them of the fact that they need to follow certain protocol and that they would, they are potentially subject to, uh, enforcement by the state of Ohio Board of Health. And in fact, I just heard, I can't remember the community, but some local bar restaurant, uh, was just closed down because they had so many violations. So, but I think communicating to these business owners is important. I heard a personal story that someone went to a restaurant that required masks and they told this person, wear your mask. This person said, well, I have a doctor's note. And the restaurant owner said, I don't care if you have a doctor's note. We are enforcing the mask. You have to leave. And they tossed her out. So I think it, you know, when you talk local level, it's not just the county and the city. It's all the way down to that business owner who can enforce these rules. Some activities, I had a lot in the last couple of weeks. I filed a petition on behalf of a police department to dispose of, uh, personal property, specifically handguns that have been confiscated over the years. I had an opportunity to review the, uh, listing exclusive right to list agreement, uh, between the city of Forest Park and J L, or College International, uh, regarding property on, I think that was the Waycross property. And then I reviewed the listing agreement for, uh, city-owned property that we have with, uh, the listing agreements with J L L, uh, Realtors. I revisited a question on the Pro Champs contract at the request of Mr. Levin Dusky. I reviewed the proposed legislation for your legislation tonight regarding the coronavirus relief fund distributions and approved of that. I also had an opportunity to review a memorandum of understanding between the Cincinnati Fire Department, our department, and other departments regarding the use of a, uh, this is a memorandum of understanding. We already have an agreement for mutual aid, but this is a memorandum of understanding for using a, the use of a FEMA, uh, Fire Protection Safety Grant, and they're using a, uh, training vehicle that the city will be able to use, uh, as scheduled through the city of Cincinnati. Uh, that is the end of my report. If there are any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for our law director? Hearing none, we will move next to.
I got a question really quick, um, for the law director. And with regards to COVID violations, we know this is all recommendations, but I, I have heard, um, some rumblings about, um, bars and restaurants that, um, when it came time to renew their liquor licenses, um, municipalities are, are putting those, like, uh, making them pending, uh, depending on if they have received any complaints about that. Is there, is that something that the city could possibly look into? I mean, I don't know, we don't have too many, um, bars or restaurants. And I, I'm sure that they, they haven't had, you know, a number of violations. But, um, just as far as the enforcement goes, um, because this is a, this is a public health crisis and we should be taking it as seriously as possible.
Yeah, the, um, Department of Liquor Control, uh, will advise the city of the fact that someone is renewing a license or transferring a license and the city has an opportunity to object. And if the city chose, an objection could be made on a particular establishment violating these COVID rules. But I would suggest in that situation, it would have to be numerous violations that are committed. And, uh, uh, because it's very hard, uh, Department of Liquor Control usually looks, instead of someone
And uh, uh, because it's very hard, uh, Department of Liquor Control usually looks, instead of someone. Uh, jaywalking, they look for murder, I mean, they, they wanna know that there's something so serious and so substantial. So repetitive, um, before they yank someone's right to uh, conduct their business. So, um, as I said, it would, it would have to be very numerous and egregious conduct. But your, yes, if that occurs, yes, we could always object.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, uh, Mr. Law Director, any other questions for our Law Director? Seeing no one, uh, we may have to go to Clerk of Counsel, Mr. Boyd.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to report the resolution numbers thirty-six dash twenty-twenty through forty. Dash twenty-twenty were posted as required, and that concludes my report.
Any questions for Clerk of Counsel? Hearing, seeing no one, and we would move next to new business, and I see there, there's a motion, Mr. Murphy.
Yes, I would move to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full on two separate days. And read for the first time by title only, ordinance number twenty-four dash twenty-twenty.
Second.
And moved in second that we suspend the rules requiring the reading in full on two separate days. And read for the first time by title only, ordinance number twenty-four dash twenty-twenty, any discussion?
Just that it was posted as required.
Hearing none, would the clerk then please call the role on the motion?
Brown.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Herbie.
Yes.
Holt.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Motion to uh, suspend the rules passes seven zero. It's item A, ordinance number twenty-four dash twenty-twenty, would the clerk please read this ordinance by title only?
Ordinance number twenty-four dash twenty-twenty, amending annual twenty-twenty appropriation ordinance twenty-one dash twenty-twenty.
Counselwoman Herbie?
Um, I just have a question, since this is being read for the first time only, is this going to be acted on tonight?
Yes, because it deals with um, finances.
Because it's finances, yeah, okay. Uh, so I would uh, move adoption of ordinance number twenty-four dash twenty-twenty.
Okay.
We moved in second that we adopt ordinance twenty-four dash twenty-twenty, is there a discussion?
Uh, yes, this is um, the Sixth Amendment to our approved budget and primarily. It is for the sole purpose of appropriating funds received from the CARES Act. Uh, there were four distributions totaling over a million dollars. And it was spent primarily on salaries, uh, remainder being spent on improvements. Um, uh, capital improvements to our facilities to uh, create permanent socially-distanced meeting spaces. Um, I do want to say that this is tied to resolutions that will be coming subsequently, so I would urge adoption of this ordinance.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, the clerk please call the role on ordinance twenty-four dash twenty-twenty.
Clark.
Yes.
Herbie.
Yes.
Holt.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Order twenty-four dash twenty-twenty passes seven zero, next item on the agenda is a motion. Ms. Herbie?
Yes, I would move to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full and read resolutions number forty-one. Dash twenty-twenty through forty-four, dash twenty-twenty by title only.
Okay.
It's been moved in second that we suspend the rules requiring the reading in full and read resolutions number forty-one. Twenty-twenty through forty-four, this, uh, forty-four twenty-twenty by title only. Is uh, their discussion?
Uh, just that these were posted as required, and just for the sake of, of counsel and anybody who might be watching. Uh, if, as long as these are posted appropriately ahead of time, you can make a motion to read by title only, and that's why. Uh, we can entertain this motion, so I would urge uh, adoption of the motion.
Any further discussion, hearing now, would the clerk please call the role on the motion?
Herbie.
Yes.
Holt.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Uh, motion to uh, suspend the rules and read by title only passes seven zero. Next item on the agenda is item B, resolution number forty-one dash twenty-twenty. Clerk, please read this resolution by title only.
Resolution number forty-one dash twenty-twenty, deletions crossed out and additions underscored. Delete a resolution complying. Amending resolution number twenty-two dash twenty-twenty that complied with AM HB four-eight-one. And adding a compliance with HB six-one-four affirming that funds received by the City of Forest Park. From the Hamilton County Coronavirus Relief, Relief Distribution Fund. May be expended only to cover costs of the City of Forest Park consistent with section five-zero-zero-one. Of the CARES Act as described in four-two USC six-oh-one D. And any applicable regulation and requesting its share of funds from the Hamilton County Coronavirus Relief Distribution Fund.
A motion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, um, I would uh, move adoption of resolution number forty-one dash twenty-twenty.
Second.
Moved in second that we adopt resolution forty-one dash twenty-twenty, is there a discussion?
Uh, yes, very briefly, um, we're amending the original uh, motion that we adopted in June. Uh, to, uh, to accept this CARES money fund, which will flow to the city. Uh, to help us with um, mitigation of costs connected with um. Things that the city does to comply with the um, uh, COVID requirements. There are two things that this affects particularly that in, in terms of amendment, one is the extension of time. For making the encumprances from October fifteenth to November second. And the second is clarifying uh, that this money can be spent. For uh, salaries of public safety workers, and so I would urge adoption of this resolution.
Any further discussion? Hearing now, would the clerk please call the role?
Holt.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Herbie.
Yes.
Resolution forty-one twenty-twenty passes seven zero, next item on the agenda is item C, resolution forty-two dash twenty-twenty. Clerk, please read this resolution by title only.
Resolution number forty-two dash twenty-twenty, a resolution funding the public safety personnel. Are substantially dedicated to mitigating or responding to the COVID-nineteen public health emergency.
Is there a motion, Ms. Herbie?
Yes, I would move adoption of resolution number forty-two dash twenty-twenty.
Okay.
Moved in second that we adopt resolution forty-two dash twenty-twenty, is there a discussion?
Yes, this is a um, a companion to the previous resolution. This indicates that we can uh, uh, do, that we can make use of these funds for safety personnel. Who in the course of their job are doing things connected to responding to the coronavirus public health emergency, and I would urge adoption of this resolution.
Any further discussion? Hearing now, would the clerk please call the role on forty-two dash twenty-twenty?
Johnson.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Herbie.
Yes.
Holt.
Yes.
Resolution forty-two twenty-twenty passes seven zero, next item is item D, resolution number forty-three twenty-twenty. Would the clerk, read, go ahead, read it by title only.
Resolution number forty-three dash twenty-twenty, a resolution finding that essential public service personnel are substantially dedicated to. Mitigating or responding to the COVID-nineteen public health emergency.
Is there a motion, yes, Councilwoman Herbie?
I would move adoption of resolution number forty-three dash twenty-twenty.
Second.
Moved in second that we adopt resolution number forty-three dash twenty-twenty. Is there a discussion?
Uh, yes, this is also a companion to the previous two resolutions. This has to do with uh, the decision to define essential public services, service personnel of the city. And with that designation, uh, it indicates that they are uh, subject to receiving. Uh, their uh, CARES money for the salaries that are paid to them, so I would urge adoption of this resolution.
Further discussion? Hearing now, would the clerk please call the role on resolution forty-three dash twenty-twenty?
Moore.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Herbie.
Yes.
Holt.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes. Resolutions number forty-three dash twenty-twenty passes seven zero, next item is, is item E, resolution forty-four dash twenty-twenty, would the clerk please read this resolution by title only?
Resolution number forty-four dash twenty-twenty, a resolution requesting the Hamilton County Auditor. To place special assessments against various properties by the City of Forest Park Community Development Department.
A motion, Councilwoman Moore?
Yes, thank you, I move um, to adopt resolution number forty-four dash twenty-twenty.
Second.
Second that we adopt resolution forty-four dash twenty-twenty. Is there a discussion, Councilwoman Moore?
Uh, yes, thank you, this is just part of our annual physical responsibility of placing on special assessments. Um, on properties where the city had to expend general public dollars to correct or clean up. Otherwise maintain private properties that are falling in this um, repair or CO violations. Currently, we have about fifteen properties representing about six thousand two hundred and ninety-one dollars and fifty cent. And so although we have a few of these may be paid uh, before the liens are actually filed. Um, I urge adoption of this resolution.
Any further discussion? Hearing now, would the clerk please call the role on resolution forty-four twenty-twenty?
Sylvester.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Herbie.
Yes.
Holt.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Resolution forty-four twenty-twenty passes seven zero, next item on the agenda is item F, a motion, Councilwoman Moore?
I motion to recess from December twenty-second on twenty-twenty through January tenth, twenty-twenty-one.
Second.
Moved in second that we recessed that the council tickets were to recess from December twenty-second, twenty-twenty through. January tenth, twenty-twenty-one, is there any discussion?
No, I do not have any discussion.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion, let it be known by the sound of voting aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed. The motion passes unanimously. Is there any other business to come before the body? Any other business to come before the body? Hearing none.
Get out and vote.
Thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
And I would declare this meeting adjourned, Sally, I'll be up there to sign these tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you all.